Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? We are honored to be joined tonight by Aubrey Wirt, who is going to sing the National Anthem for us. Aubrey is a sixth grade student at Carl Sandberg Middle School. She's an active member of her school choirs, school musicals, Neshamani Summer Stock, a cadet in the Girl Scouts of Eastern Pennsylvania, Neshamani Valley Service Unit, and she's actually a yellow belt in karate. In the future, Aubrey hopes to become a forensic scientist. Aubrey, come on up. And would everyone please join me and stand?
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was fantastic. Thank you so much, Aubrey. Have a one more round of applause for Aubrey Wirt. Ms. Corporal, would you please call roll?
Mr. Kezak? Ms. Hannah?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Ms. Payne?
Here.
Also in attendance, Ms. Township Manager, Ms. Tully Coles is here via Zoom. Assistant Township Manager, Mr. Valla. Township Solicitor, Mr. Esposito. Township Engineer, Mr. Kessler. Chief of Police, Joseph Bartaralli. Police Captain, Pete Feeney. Director of Building and Zoning, Jim Ennis. Director of Parks and Recreation, Paul Copera. Director of Finance, Megan Bedera. Director of Public Works, Eric Gardemeier.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. We have a few upcoming events. First is that the next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, October 21st, 2024, at 7:00 PM in this room. We also have coming up on Saturday, September 28th, Groovin' at the Gates. Again, that's Saturday, September 28th. That'll be noon to 5:00 PM, and that takes place in Forsythia Crossing Park. We also have coming up our Middletown Township Fire Prevention Expo. That'll be Saturday, October 12th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And that takes place in the Restaurant Depot parking lot. That's at 1661 Lincoln Highway. So Groovin' at the Gates, September 28th, Fire Prevention Expo on October 12th. We have several special items tonight. The first is we have recognition of the retirement of Officer Paul Runner. Chief Bartaralli?
Good evening, Mr. Kezak, fellow board members, as we always do. We're going to honor one of our retiring officers. We have had a run of retirements lately. And like I always do, I'm going to read a biography into record of Officer Paul Runner. Officer Paul Runner began his career in policing in Bucks County in 1993, becoming a member of the Tullytown Borough Police Department. Some of Paul's immediate family lived in Tullytown at the time, so it was an exciting opportunity for him to police the Tullytown community. Paul was an officer in Tullytown until 2000, when he made the switch to the Middletown Township Police Department. Paul was a big, part of a big transition for MTPD, which had done quite a bit of hiring in the five years preceding and leading up to his hiring. So Paul joined at a time when there were many newer officers in the department. In his time with MTPD, Paul has been a member of the Patrol Division and a member of the Traffic Safety Unit. Paul brought the Tullytown small-town community policing style to Middletown. He always took care of his sector, getting to know the business owners and community members, and patrolling all of the neighborhoods every day to keep the township safe. Paul has been a great mentor to our younger officers, always even keeled, always mild-mannered, always calm, and always a true professional. He is highly respected by everyone in the Middletown Township Police Department and highly regarded by all who know him so well in our business and residential communities. Paul's retirement marks the end of a significant chapter in MTPD's history, one that cannot be replaced. Thank you, Paul, for everything you have given to the Middletown Township community and to the Bucks County community in your 32 years of honorable service. May you be richly blessed in your retirement and enjoy the next exciting chapter of your life. You will be truly missed by all of us. Congratulations. And I do have a plaque for Officer Runner. It just says Officer Paul Runner, his badge, 4480. Congratulations on your retirement after 24 years of honorable service with the Middletown Township Police Department, August 14th, 2000 to September 8th, 2024. You guys want to get a photo with? Thank you, Mr. Kezak.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Officer Runner, for your years of dedication to our department and our community. And we certainly wish you the best of luck in your retirement.
Paul, do you want to say anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We do have a couple other special items. The first is a proclamation recognizing September as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in Middletown Township. Whereas almost 22,000 people are diagnosed with ovarian cancer in the United States every year, the deadliest of all female reproductive system cancers. And whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause of cancer deaths in women in the United States and causes more deaths than any other gynecologic cancer. And whereas in the United States, a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is about 1 in 78. And whereas women's lives can be saved through increased public awareness of ovarian cancer and its risk factors, signs, and symptoms. And whereas during National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, we stand in solidarity with the brave women fighting this terrible disease. We honor the mothers, sisters, daughters, wives, and friends we have tragically lost. And we renew our commitment to ending cancer as we know it. And whereas each year during September, people living with ovarian cancer, their families and supporters, along with patient advocacy organizations, come together to raise awareness about ovarian cancer. And whereas Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month is a time to remember and honor those who fought hard but lost their battle to ovarian cancer. Now therefore, the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim September as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in Middletown Township. We also have a proclamation recognizing a township resident. Dr. William Coleman, a distinguished resident of Middletown Township, currently residing at Penswood Village in Langhorne, will celebrate his 105th birthday on September 13th, 2024. Whereas Dr. Coleman has honorably served his country as a veteran of the United States Navy, embodying the spirit of service and sacrifice for the nation. And whereas Dr. Coleman pursued an exemplary medical career, attending Princeton University and Temple Medical School, interning at Philadelphia General Hospital and completing a surgical residency at Abington Hospital. His dedication to the field of medicine led him to establish a successful surgical practice and serve as the medical director of Meadow Lakes in New Jersey. He also contributed his expertise as a member of the Medical Review Board. And whereas Dr. Coleman's professional accomplishments are many, but for those who know him, his humility is his greatest attribute. He's a beacon of kindness, welcoming those around him with generosity of spirit and infectious joy. His ability to spread warmth and positivity while generously giving of his time to others has made a lasting impact on all who know him. And whereas Dr. Coleman's legacy as a veteran, a medical professional, and a compassionate individual has enriched both his community and the lives of all those around him. His presence and contributions continue to be an inspiration to all. And now therefore be it resolved that the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all of his residents, proudly recognizes Dr. William Coleman on his 105th birthday. We express our deep appreciation for his lifetime of service, generosity, and enduring positive impact on our community. That brings us to public comment. This is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Yes, sir. Please come up and state your name and address.
Yes, my name's Chris Marath, 825 Fernwood Avenue, Langhorne Gaples Section. I have a concern with an ongoing zoning issue. The property is 855 Fernwood, and the property owner is running a construction contracting business. So on January 5th, I met with the Township Manager. I voiced my concerns, provided photos, and then I then met with the zoning director and did the same. So on the 25th of January, the violation notice went to the property owner. They appealed and they requested a use variance. And that was scheduled to go in front of the zoning hearing board on March 27th. Prior to that meeting, they withdrew the appeal and the request of the use variance. Okay? So I guess it was around... Well, even after that, we never got a date for compliance when they were going to enforce what was in this letter, removing all vehicles, equipment, material, ceasing operations, and activities associated with the contracting business. So it was around late April, and the attorney that we hired, he reached out to me and said, "Has there been any improvement?" I said, "No, it's business as usual." So he contacted the zoning director, and he replied that he will investigate further. It's going to take time. The last that he had spoken with the property owner, he was in compliance, as well as when he last visited the property. And he asked if we could provide specifics. So I provided more photos to our attorney, who forwarded them to the zoning director. And then, and this second reply was within an hour and a half of the first one. You know, he said, you know, "I'll continue to monitor, not seeing much with the photos." And, you know, he said he did a drive-by to the property, didn't identify issues. So we sent more photos. And then there was a little activity. I guess there were some phone calls and meetings and whatnot. But here we are, almost nine months later, and it's business as usual down there. Okay? The only thing that's happened, they did get rid of one excavator and one trailer. I mean, you can plainly see, I mean, they're trying to hide material behind a tarp that's draped over a shed, because it's a cul-de-sac. There's only four houses on the street. Clearly say it. So then, like I said, a lot of, really not much going on. And then on June 17th, our attorney received an email from Jim Ennis stating that the property owner was applying for a accessory home use. To me, it's a use variance. It looks like they're trying to go in the back door and get a use variance. And then this raises a question too. If he's in compliance, why is he applying for an accessory home use, or I'll call it a use variance? Okay? I mean, that's a question. And I don't know why this has taken nine months, almost nine months to get resolved. I really don't know what's going on. But I think this needs to be resolved, and that application should be denied. Number one, because it's R1. There's no place for this type of activity in R1. And that activity in itself, that raises safety concerns with all the vehicles up and down the street, and also environmental concerns, as far as I'm concerned, with the storage of equipment. There's still an excavator on site. The property owner's tucking it behind the house. You know, he's put tarps over it before. I provided photos with that, but here we are. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I don't know, Mr. Esposito or Mr. Ennis, I don't know if either of you are able to shed some light for the board on the status of this?
The property owner is in a residential zoning district that does allow for accessory home occupations in the trades. He's a plumber. He has applied for a permit for that allowance. But there's a lot of information that needs to happen to make sure I can either A, deny it without a challenge, or B, approve the permit and make sure that he's in full compliance. I have been in discussions with that property owner's attorney. They have given me a lot of information. I was just reviewing it to make sure that everything's in compliance. Permit has not been issued, nor has a permit that's been denied yet, because I'm still trying to just work it out with the property owner. I have been in discussions, even just as recently, about a week or so ago, with these neighboring property owners' attorneys. And so, attorney, I should say. So he's well aware that I'm still reviewing information that is concerning that permit application.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Ennis, just keep the board updated if you can. And sir, if you have further concerns, you can obviously feel free to come back and bring them before us. But at least at this point, it's under review by the Building and Zoning Department. Sure, come on back up. Just make sure you speak in the microphone.
Yeah, I have a question. So after he dropped his appeal and the request for the use variance back in March, why wasn't this letter enforced? He's still getting to run his business from there without, you know, withdrawing this. You're admitting your guilt that you're violating zoning. Everything should have left the property. But he's getting to just business as usual. Nothing's changed for him. I mean, that doesn't seem right. We have to suffer with all the traffic up and down the street? And one of his employees, he drives up and down there like it's the Acco Speedway.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the status, the legal status of the violation. I understand that he dropped his use var... Yeah, Mr. Ennis?
It was not a use variance. It was not a use variance. It was specific requirements tied to accessory home occupation in the trades. There's all these different requirements. He was asking for certain variances from those requirements. So he is allowed to have an accessory home occupation in the trades, meaning his plumber's business, but there's certain requirements that are tied to that. I'm trying to work with him to make sure he's maintaining compliance with those requirements. So that does need to be, there's distinction there. It's not a use variance.
Okay. And what's the status of the violation that was issued?
Well, the violation had to do with some of the requirements that were with the home occupation in the trades. And I did enforce that. He did try to go before the zoning hearing board, but then withdrew it. And then also got his attorney to tell me that he would like to pursue a permit but be in full compliance with those things. He's been kind of trickling me information, and I've been looking at it. It's been reviewed, being reviewed now.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Can I ask a question? Is there a timeline for it?
There's not a timeline for an actual zoning permit like this one. Especially since they are actually working with me. Once they give me something, I say, "What about this?" And then eventually give me something and everything else. But I've already just texted their attorney and said, "Hey, what's the status on some other information I'm looking for right now?"
Thank you.
Just keep on top of it if you can. Thank you. Thank you, sir, for bringing that to the board's attention. And again, feel free to come back if you have further concerns. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? State your name and address, please.
Hi, Dave Cahill, 462 Cynthia. So as you know, I was here last month asking questions about Pendel Fire Company's Tower 8. So I got a, I got a response back from the Pendel Fire Company on the right-to-know request that I put in for those loan documents for Tower 8. And I was denied my request. It also goes on to say here that they're a nonprofit. They're an independent nonprofit, and that they're exempt from right-to-know requests. So my question is, is that if they're exempt from right-to-know requests, why did they respond to my request?
I can't really answer that. I mean, we, the Pendel Fire Company is a different entity from Middletown Township. They are not part of the township. They provide fire services to residents of Middletown, but they're not chartered in Middletown Township. They're chartered in Pendel, and they're a completely separate entity. So, and I can't give you a legal opinion as to whether or not they are, they fall under the right-to-know request law. So I don't know the answer to that question.
So the loan documents just bring up more questions, or the, I'm sorry, the right-to-know request that they sent me, the denial just brings up more questions because they're an independent nonprofit. I'm asking questions about the loan documents. So again, I ask, like I asked last month, how did they qualify for such a big loan? If they're an independent nonprofit, there's no income. So how are they, how are they qualifying for such a big loan? And why are the loan documents such a secret? If they want to clear the air to my question, wouldn't it be, wouldn't the right thing to do to show me the loan documents?
Again, they're a separate entity from the township. So I don't, I don't have any information as to their loans or their loan documents. I mean, I can't answer those questions.
But they're contracted with the township.
They're contracted to provide fire services to our residents.
Correct. So I met with the township manager a week and a half after I came to the microphone last month. And she tells me that if the fire company was using truck fund money to make their payments, that the township supplied for years 2022 and 2023, she said that she wouldn't have a problem with that. So I had gotten a copy of the contract a year and a half prior. So I went back to the contract, and I read the contract. And it says that the only thing that the truck fund money is supposed to be used for is replacement of apparatus or refurbishment. Doesn't say anywhere in there that they're, that they can use the money to make loan payments. Now, I'm not saying that they were or they weren't. I'm just kind of curious why they're asking the township to take over the payments of the tower when the township took back the control of the truck fund money in January 2024?
That is, it's an ongoing process where the township is, you're correct. The township is taking back some control over the apparatus of the various volunteer fire companies that serve our community. But it's, it's an ongoing process. There's, there's, it's, everything has not been finalized. We're still negotiating a single contract with all the companies. I mean, I can't, I'm not in a position to answer your questions.
So are any of you supervisors curious what the loan application says for income?
We're doing a lot of review and meeting with the four volunteer fire companies as we work our way through this process. And the finances are very complicated because you're dealing with four separate entities.
Millions of dollars, right? Millions of dollars.
Sure, absolutely.
These fire trucks are expensive.
Very expensive.
So can I ask and have faith in the supervisors, in the township, in making sure that they at least take a look at the loan documents to see what's there as income? Because the money that the township gives them is not income. None of the money, none of the operating expense money is income, and neither is the truck fund money.
But are you referring to loan payments that are made for loans that were used to purchase apparatus?
For the tower, for Tower 8. This is all about Tower 8? It's all about Tower 8?
I mean, we're looking into everything. Let's put it that way. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Yep. State your name and address, please.
Hi, Jim Jenka, Langhorne, PA. That kind of threw me for a loop because I have a question, not related to that, but kind of, I guess. I don't know. Anyway, I'm going to ask this horrific question upfront. Is the trash contract a complete, done deal and signed with waste management at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Now, as many residents might not be aware, we have $40 million from the sale of the Water Authority many, many years ago that sits in a fund, collects interest. And I'm under the impression, please correct me if I'm wrong, every year that draws 1. some odd million dollars in interest that's used by this board and other boards previous for budget, other things for the township. Is that correct, sort of? No?
Yes and no. It generates interest. The amount of interest it generates varies.
Sure.
We do not always use the interest. The interest is there to be used if we need it, but we don't always use it.
What is the current balance of the $40 million fund or sale? From, what year was it? It was like 2012? I forget.
Before I was on this board, Mr. Jenka.
I understand that, but I guess my point is, what is the principal as we sit here tonight?
You're talking about the $40 million plus the interest to date currently?
Yeah.
I don't know that number.
Does anybody here have?
I'm sure we can find it, but I don't know off the top of my head.
It's approximately 42 million.
Okay, so over all these years, the 40 million principal has gained $2 million approximately?
The Board of Supervisors, prior to this board, has adopted a resolution that restricts the principal $40 million balance, but not anything above that. And as you correctly identified, yes, this board has transferred funds for operating purposes and other purposes.
So it's being used?
Above the 40 million.
That's what I meant, the interest, not the principal.
Correct.
Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, the EIT earned 8 million last year? Or was that projected for this year?
I don't know the exact figure off the top of my head.
Well, it's about 8 million. Is that fair? Can anybody?
Yes, that's correct.
You're our board. I mean, you should know, right?
I mean, ballpark. I don't have the exact figure.
Okay, approximately 8 million is not far-fetched, correct?
That's ballpark, yeah.
Okay, so, so why couldn't, during a trash contract, like we gave back, not we, I'm sorry, the board gave back $1 million to the residents a few years, several years back in excess EIT. So why couldn't some of the funds have been used for keeping the trash? So why couldn't some of the funds have been used for keeping the trash contract the way it was? And taking some of the EIT whatever and supplementing people that were on fixed incomes that you were so concerned about? And you gave out the numbers. The numbers kept changing of who was for, against, whatever. Why couldn't we have supplemented through the EIT, the interest from the 40 million? And we have money to help out those in need for things that people wanted to keep the trash the same.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it's, it's, it's water under the bridge. I understand that, but.
It's water under the bridge. I mean, I, I can't speak for the whole board. I can only say that I personally did not and do not think that is a good use of that interest money. I, we, we use that money when we as a board decide that it's appropriate and necessary and reasonable under the circumstances. That was not something I considered, to be honest with you. But I think you're also, your question presumes that the majority of the residents of this township wanted the trash pickup to remain as it was and would have been supportive of taking money out of that account, which we largely consider to be for worst case scenario rainy day type situations to pay for trash. I believe trash collection is an essential service to residents of this township without question. I do not believe that manual two day a week trash collection is an essential service. I believe that's a luxury. And we did a lot with the board to get resident feedback and our, at least my perception was that there was a significant number of residents who liked trash the way it was, wanted to keep it that way and were willing to pay more money if that's what it took to maintain it. There was a significant number of residents who were perfectly fine with moving to a different version based on cost and were not willing to pay more money to maintain the current level. And then there was a whole bunch of residents, possibly the majority, who didn't have strong feelings one way or the other about it. And given all of that data, I did not feel that it was responsible to force that price increase to stay with manual trash collection on the residents of our township. And while it was not something that this board even entertained or considered at the time, I can tell you sitting here today, I do not think that would be a responsible use of the interest from the sewer fund.
Was the million dollar give back to the residents responsible use of that money?
Years ago, different time, different financial circumstances.
Wow, okay. But you say the majority of the residents. I don't, nobody believes the majority of the residents want it once a week. But neither here nor there.
You say nobody, you're, you're speaking for yourself, Mr. Jenka.
I said the majority, okay.
You said nobody believes the majority of residents. So using the word nobodies.
Okay, I'll rephrase. I don't believe it.
Okay.
I'll never believe it.
Believe whatever you want.
And neither here nor there, it's done. Okay. So my question, has some, maybe you on the board, Mike, I think you were on the board. I used to come up to this podium and ask about police officers, how many we have. Be concerned about officer safety, residents' safety. We have approved so many condominiums, warehouses, you know, we've grown, for lack of better words. What is the number of active police officers that we have right now in Middletown Township? How many? Active, on duty?
Do you know the number?
Yeah, 60.
60. So if my memory serves me correct, we had around 59 four years ago, maybe? When I came up here, I think you were on the board, Mr. Kiesak, if I'm not mistaken?
I don't remember, but.
You don't remember? Okay, well, I do.
I don't remember you coming up and, and raising that issue, but I, I believe.
Well, I certainly remember.
I believe you.
Okay. But anyway, we had about 59 at the time. Okay, there was a study, Ms. T.O. Coles is very much aware of this study because she was part of the conversation.
I am aware of the study.
Okay. And it said back then, that was many years ago, 60 to 65 police officers would have been what they recommended. Once, key word, recommended. And we only have 60 right now? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So we've only increased between retirements, disability, whatever, one officer?
Correct.
After all these years?
Yes.
With all the growth of in our township?
I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what growth you're referring to.
Well, we're building condominiums. We're having people move into the township. We're doing the Amazon warehouse. There's going to be more service calls. There's going to be, you know, so much more need for police officers. Let's not even get into that, which I will, the school resource officers. I think we have four right now. I don't know, but I'm not going to talk about numbers on that. But I had a conversation with Superintendent Mr. Bowman after the latest Georgia incident where four people were killed, two teachers, two kids and many wounded. So I have a concern that like, I'd love to see a police officer in every school, armed. I'm sure many people would. Once again, here, I'm not allowed to speak for other people. I understand that. But what is more precious than our children? Banks, jewelry stores, everything have armed security. But we send our kids into schools, they're not protected. I mean, we do have some. So when I talked to Mr. Bowman, and I'm not going to speak for Mr. Bowman, but he said that's a board, Nishamani Board, school, and Middletown. Do we have a liaison from the board for the school district?
We, we are.
We used to, I know we.
We don't have a dedicated liaison, but I think every single one of us communicates with members of the school board regularly. I, I talk to the school board president very frequently.
Okay, so is there any plan to maybe increase, first of all, police officers in our township for the safety of our residents and officer safety? Is there any plan for that?
The, the answer to that question is every single year, we revisit our police force, we revisit number of officers, we meet with the chief, as we meet with all department heads to talk about staffing, to talk about requests, to talk about needs. It's something we review annually.
Okay. And now, this gentleman, I forget his name, I apologize, that just spoke about the Tower Eight or whatever. I thought we funded the fire departments with tax dollars and grants or whatever. Is that, is that correct? Tax dollars?
They get, they get funding from a variety of different sources, but certainly tax dollars is one.
Tax dollars is one.
Yeah.
Well, why is this gentleman not entitled to a right to no request legally? When he's a tax paying resident, or I assume he pays his taxes? I, I don't understand, I didn't understand that whole thing, why he couldn't get a.
He served, well, that's not my question to answer.
No, I understand.
He served a right to no request on a Pendel Fire Department. We are not the Pendel Fire Department.
But we count on you, the board.
I can't, I can't answer a right to no request on behalf of a separate legal entity.
About that. I'm saying, we count on the Board of Supervisors to oversee our monies, to make sure that things are done properly. And it didn't seem like anybody has an answer for what the contract was, the loan, whatever. I, I honestly don't know exactly what he's talking about, but it seemed like there was no answer for what he. And I find that a little troubling?
We are very involved with the fire departments. We've talked to the fire departments. We meet with the fire departments, so.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to do that. Ms. Payne, well, Ms. Payne's here, right? She's on Zoom or something?
She is.
Because I have a couple of questions for her, if that's okay?
Sure.
Ms. Payne? You, you put out a flyer as a supervisor saying that the police and fire department is fully funded. That's your, your flyer, your approved flyer. How are they fully funded when Langhorn Middletown, as an example, stands on the corner begging for money, I hate to use the word begging, I shouldn't say that, asking for money, you know, toss, coin toss, whatever they call it. I mean, if they're fully funded, why do they have to ask for money? Are they fully funded?
So our Middletown Fire Department that works for.
Well, all, all the fire departments, all, Ms. Payne.
Yeah, so how the fire service is set up here is there is the paid services that we pay for. And then there's the volunteer companies. They are separate entities, which was brought up earlier, why they are a 501(c)(3). They work with us. They respond to residents, right? They all work together.
Sure.
But when we're talking about our tax dollars funding the fire department, we're talking about our paid fire services, our chief, our four fire, uh, firemen that we have here that work in daytime response. So they respond to things when our volunteers, um, you know, need assistance, right? That's what it's for.
Okay, so is the volunteer fire department fully funded, is my question, I guess?
I, I believe that's a question you'd have to take up with each individual company.
But you're put. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, it's okay. We don't have access to their financial records as of right now, from what I understand. I believe that that is what Mr. Kiesak was referencing, the single use contract where we are trying to get everybody on the same page. Their app, their financial situation is not necessarily fully involved with the township, right? They have their own 501(c)(3), so they do fundraising. They do things like that. So they can provide services. Yes, they do get a stipend for services they provide, but that's more recent too, within the last couple of years. I believe 2018, and somebody could correct me if I'm wrong, about that, that we give them. So there is a difference in what you're, what we're talking about, right? And that's kind of what the, the gentleman from Cynthia.
I'm sorry, if you could hear me, you're breaking up a little bit. I'm sorry. A lot of bit.
That's all, right? He's asking for records of the township directly. They took. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Yes?
Yes.
Can you hear? Okay.
No, you're broken up. I don't, I don't want to waste your time or.
Yeah, Ms. Payne, we're, we're having trouble hearing you. I think there's a connection.
Yeah, it must be a connection issue or something. So I, like I said, are they fully funded? So I guess the answer is no, correct?
So that is, I don't know what it left off.
Well, I asked if the volunteer fire department are fully funded. No, the volunteer.
I, that. Our Middletown Fire Department that we raised taxes for last year to help fund. We, we are working with the fire to have to directly ask the volunteer fire services. But that is something they asked of us to help financially support them, and we have done that to the best of our ability, and we're still working on a single use contract.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to talk with you offline about this if it's easier since I'm breaking up.
No, no, you're actually clear now. Thank you. And that came across clear. And the reason I asked is because coincidentally, I didn't, I don't know this gentleman, didn't know what he was going to be asking, but you're claiming that they're fully funded in your literature. So that's what made me confused when he was speaking about loans or whatever, when I'm taking loans. You're claiming that the volunteer fire departments are fully funded. Okay, so they're not then, I guess?
No, I think that, I believe that the, no, I believe the claim was that our Middletown Services Fire Department is fully funded, and that was what we raised, increased taxes to help pay for last year.
Okay, and with that tax increase, is there money set aside to buy fire trucks, more fire trucks that we may need? Do we have money set aside because of that?
Yes.
Tax increase? Do you know how much money for fire trucks? Because they're more than $10,000. I know they're a lot of money.
Yeah, is there, I mean, I don't recall the exact amount off the top of my head since we approved it in 2023. But I believe, you know, we did set aside money and that the fire departments came to support that. That is part of the working agreement that we are, you know, that we have with the volunteers to try and relieve some of their financial struggles.
Okay, so I live where the Parkland Fire Company responds. So if I have a fire, God forbid, Parkland Fire Company comes to me and I'm sure other departments too, I would hope. If I ask them if they were fully funded by Middletown, are they going to say yes or no to me? Parkland, specifically?
I, you'd have to directly ask them to be perfectly honest.
So you can't say, even though you're saying that they're fully funded? That's where, that's where I'm confused. And I wasn't confused until this gentleman spoke, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I believe the claim that we're talking about is I don't have the information in front of me because this is talking about something different than what we should be talking about at a Middletown Township meeting.
You're out there as a supervisor stating that it's fully funded?
Correct. I'm not saying that that claim was not made on the literature, but what I'm talking about, we're talking about two different things. We're not supposed to be talking about political.
I'm not being political. I wouldn't, this came up because of this gentleman about Tower Eight or whatever he was talking about, about a loan. I didn't even know about a loan. That's my ignorance, but. Okay, well, I'm not going to beat a dead horse on that, but, um, you know, we had a federal grant that Congressman Fitzpatrick got for, uh, Middletown Township, years back. Ms. T.O. Coles, I'm sure is very familiar with that. Mike, I think you are too, Mr. Kiesak. Um, and he decided to turn the grant down and not hire officers with that grant, uh, for whatever reason.
You're talking about the grant that was awarded during COVID where the grant.
Yeah, no, I.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
Okay.
I get that you're here. I get that you're here for political reasons. I understand that.
I'm not political.
Mr. Jenka.
Mr. Kiesak.
You're not.
I'm talking.
It's transparent, okay? You're, you're, you've, you called out Ms. Payne individually to ask her questions about her campaign literature for an election.
Well, I'm hearing we're fully funded and now I'm hearing we don't know, and she doesn't know, but yet she's saying we are. I wouldn't have even brought that up if it wasn't for the gentleman about Tower Eight loans.
Why are you asking about her campaign literature for her?
Because she's stating that everything's fully funded and this gentleman's talking about a loan.
All right, so if you want to talk about the, the, uh, the safer grant that you referenced, the issue with that is it requires the township to then fully fund those police officers once the grant runs out. That grant was awarded during COVID. And we were at a point in time where we were very concerned about revenue and being able to cover expenditures. We were cutting all non-essential services. So committing to fully funding additional police officers when we're in the middle of a pandemic and we're concerned about a financial crisis was not a responsible thing to do as a local government. That's why we accept that one.
And that's fair. That's your decision. You're elected. Okay, I got that. So you chose, when I say you, I don't mean you personally, the board, don't shake your head. That's kind of disrespectful.
I own it. I chose. I accept it. I don't deny it.
But you chose to use our tax dollars for four, I believe, electric charging stations for vehicles? Was it four? I, I forget. How many?
That wasn't, that.
Well, whatever amount.
Okay, you're okay.
So we, we use tax dollars for electric charging stations.
Yeah, you can talk.
Yeah.
First of all, it was a different time period you're talking about.
Sure.
It's not, you're not comparing two equal things. And second, we got a grant for the electric charging stations. Am I correct about that?
But where do grants come from, tax dollars? I mean, nobody.
They're there for, our, our township does, gets a lot of grants and we work really diligently to do that.
That, and you guys do a great job. I'm, I'm serious.
So it's not the tar, it's not, we're not taking that from what our township residents are paying in taxes. And we're, it's alleviating, really, we can get a lot more done with the grants that we get.
Okay. All right, well, I just, I find it disheartening, it doesn't matter because it's, I'm only me, I'm speaking for myself, that we use that money, maybe we were forced to use it and it was, you know, designated for that, to use tax dollars or a grant or both for charging stations when it could have went to fund police, fire and EMS. And I hope in the future that the board would take these things into consideration. Like you said, Mr. Kiesak, you didn't think it was responsible for something back then and, you know, and, and I respect that. That's your decision. But I don't think it's responsible that, you know, charging stations. I'd be curious, how much are they used? I don't expect you to answer that.
I bet you Mr. Val knows the answer, actually.
Really?
He's a smart guy.
I didn't expect that. Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Are they used for real? Because you've got to pay for it, right?
Yes, the people that utilize those stations do pay for them. My office window looks right out over those and I would say probably 50/50 chance throughout the day that there's at least one, if not two vehicles out there.
Wow, okay, good. And dare I ask, an attorney, if I'm permitted to, that is, because I know you're an attorney. So Mr. Kiesak, you could let me know if I could ask Mr. Esposito, but what I want to ask is the, um, fee for the trash? Because it's been unequivocally stated it's a fee, not a tax, even though it's on our tax bill. Correct?
It, it is a fee. It is a fee for service, correct?
Right, it's not a tax, but it's on our tax bill. You collect the money and you turn it over to Waste Management, correct?
Yeah, we have a single hauler system where we negotiate a single contract on behalf of all residents. We then collect that money and play, pay the contractor and it is collected on your tax bill, but it is not a tax.
Right, are the residents obligated legally to enter into that same agreement that you did? Are we obligated or are we forced to be bound by your agreement with Waste Management with that fee? What if we said, you know, we don't want to pay the fee?
You're saying, just refuse trash collection?
Yeah, are we, are we able to do that?
The answer is yes. The township has a solid waste and recycling ordinance, which does.
The township has a solid waste and recycling ordinance, which does say unless you live in a homeowner's association apartment complex where your trash is contracted by another agency, you by default participate in the township's negotiated, or I'm sorry, bid out service.
So we, we don't have the option to do our own thing then, right?
Yes, if you do not live in an apartment complex or homeowner's association, yes, you have to participate in the township's.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. And, and, and thanks for letting me take all this time. I really appreciate it. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mr. Jenka. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Your name and address.
Lance Seggers, 98 Queen Lily Road. I skipped my turn last time because the meeting was running pretty long, so I'll just make a couple of brief comments in regards to just how the board presented the trash collection information, as if it was very close and almost, you know, 50/50 as far as keeping the two days a week, whether it was manual or going to two days automated or the single. To me, it wasn't really that close. I can tell you feedback, when you look at some of the social media stuff, people didn't feel like it was that close. It really came down to either you keep two days a week or you go to one day a week. And when you add the two percentages for the two days a week, it's around 56, 57%. I understand the reasons why you went to one day, but I think to me, it, it looks more like we did a poll and the board decided, we know better than the citizens, and we're just going to vote the way we wanted to vote, which I think one of my first comments in, at a meeting, was some of the board members were making comments about the trash collection that was favorable to one day a week before we even did a poll, any of that stuff. So that was my concern. My other.
Respond briefly to that point. Because I, I think that's a fair point. And one of the things that I struggled with, with this poll, and in retrospect, I'm not even sure if the poll was very helpful, because there were a bunch of different ways that you could interpret the data. One way you could look at it is that roughly 50/50, but a slight edge preferred to keep trash the way it was, manual two days a week, as opposed to people that were in favor of going automated. And I, I absolutely acknowledge that. Another way to look at the data was the way you just described, which is if you combine the people who wanted two day versus one day, you get a majority in favor of two day as opposed to one day. But you could also look at it as if you combine the people that wanted two day automated and one day automated, you get a majority of people that preferred moving to automated as opposed to staying manual. So it depends how you analyze the data and how you choose to look at it. You can find whatever it is you're searching for. And I've had lots of conversations with residents since that poll came out, and everybody had a different way of looking at it. To me, the problem with that is it made it not all that helpful. At the end of the day, and, and you guys, obviously residents, didn't necessarily see it in real time, but we were getting updates. I mean, it was, it was fluctuating, but basically hanging around 50/50 the whole time as the numbers were coming in. The other thing that I think is important is there are 45,000 almost residents in this township, 12,000 households, like less than a quarter of the people responded to that poll. So I also didn't find that poll to necessarily be an accurate, necessarily reflection of all the residents in the township and what they wanted. So all I can say to you, and again, I can't speak for the whole board, I tried to take all the available information, I tried to do what I thought was the responsible thing. I get that there are a lot of residents that are unhappy because they like trash the way it was, and they were more than willing to pay more money to keep it the same way. But for me, I was more concerned about the people who don't use the current level of service, it's more than they need, and in any event, they were not willing or unable to pay more money to keep it the same way. And so unbalanced, for me, that tipped the scale. And I, and I get not everybody agrees with me, and you're free not to. I think procedurally, we tried our best to be as open and transparent and have as many conversations as we possibly could. There are definitely things that I would do differently in retrospect, with the benefit of hindsight, seeing how this all played out. But it's, it's done, it's over, it happened, and this is where we are. But I, I appreciate and acknowledge what you're saying about different interpretations of that poll data.
And, and, and the reason I, I bring that up is, is, look, it's been brought up in this meeting about adding a fee tax for stormwater management, things that probably don't affect me or a lot of other residents in this county like trash, or this township like trash. I would just hope that when, at some point, you guys decide to look at that, that you, you consider my tax money the way you've considered the 43% in probably being opposed to any kind of fee that raises my taxes. So that would, you know, that'll be my comment on that, and I hope other people are as passionate about that as myself. The, the third thing is, and I told you I was going to keep bringing it up, where are we at on the land management ordinance? Have we run any case law? Have we figured out what avenue we could take to try to limit condensation of properties? Because as, I mean, I don't know if the information that he provided was accurate, but where we're at with police services, and I brought up the last meeting, it's not just police services that are being overwhelmed at this point with adding the population, school services, you know, medical services, it is, runs the entire gambit of services in this township. And if we keep adding thousands and thousands of people in concentrated area, you're going to be sitting at your doctor, like me the last time I went for a general physical, for over an hour past your appointment. You are going to be having higher police wait times. So is there any case law that you guys have looked at, Mr. Esposito, or you, that says, hey, we might be able to do this on environmental reasons, safety reasons, whatever it may be, to?
We actually have been looking into this. I don't know, Mr. Esposito, do you want to just provide some information? And we, we had, just to give context, I know you were here and you raised the issue. And I think it was on the heels of a land development project that the board approved, but some of the members of the board, maybe all of us, expressed frustration with it and feeling to some degree that our hands are tied. And we have to approve things because the law doesn't give us a lot of options when a plan is brought before us. And so your thought was, is there a way that we can change our ordinance to give us a little bit more ability, flexibility, more grounds to deny land development plans that we don't like?
Right, I'm not going to tell you you can't build, you just can't build an apartment.
It's a good question. So Mr. Esposito, and Mr. Esposito was not here at that meeting, but.
No, but so, but there actually was a meeting in between. I believe he said it at the last meeting, and I'm going to pretty much repeat what I said last time. There are statutes in Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Municipalities Code, Second Class Township Code, that regulates what the township is allowed to do with zoning ordinances. We can't just say, nope, we're not going to allow apartments. The township is required to permit pretty much every use somewhere in the township. It just has to be reasonable zoning, zoning districts for those specific uses. There are ways to control it to an extent, but we can't just say, no, you can't have apartments. The zoning director, myself, and the whole zoning department, look at this stuff constantly. But for something like this, a township-wide review, we would need to get probably a third party to come in and look at an overhaul of the zoning ordinance. That's something that's going to take the township and the board supervisors to take a big look at, because it's going, it's a cost, it's a, it's a big cost. But the way the zoning ordinance is currently written is within regulations, we're not, we're not, we don't overly permit certain things and others, but if people comply with the regulations under the subdivision land development ordinance on the zoning ordinance, and there's no legitimate legal reasons for that to deny, and they, it has to be approved. But we do constantly look at it, we're in constant contact with the Bucks County Planning Commission, there's a curtain, we're looking at, overhauling some of the zoning districts in the Levittown area, and we're working with Bucks County Planning Commission, they're doing a review and a study for us that we pay, the township paid for them to review. That is things that we constantly look at and something that we'll probably bring up with the Bucks County Planning Commission about apartments and townhomes, because those are big projects that are coming, coming in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know one of the things that I know is on my radar is this continuous push, especially from developers, on higher and higher density. So I think it's going to be a struggle in the coming years to, to kind of push back on that, but I know it's one on my radar and one of the things that I think is going to have a, a big impact on our quality of life.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just, yeah, just come to the microphone. No problem.
Thank you very much for letting me come back up. I, I know you keep saying 25% is not a good representation of the township with the vote opinion, whatever you want to call it. I just want to remind you, and the other members of the board, in all of your elections, you yourself were elected with less than 25% representation of the voters, registered voters. So I mean, it kind of bugs me when you say that, so it's not a knock on you, but it's reality. I mean, we know off-year elections, we're lucky if we get 25% of the voters to turn out. I find it sad, but reality.
Yeah, it is, it is unfortunate. I, I think, and that's a fair point. I think, Mike, what I was trying to explain, though, is that we only had 25% responding, and of that 25, I didn't find the results to be strikingly strong in any, in any particular direction, which concerned me that this poll, these poll results from 25% of residents or 25% of households were not reflective of the township as a whole. But I, I agree. Listen, I wish every household in the township responded to the poll.
So do I.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Please state your name and address.
Eric Brenner, 79 in Spicum. There's nothing on the agenda that I want to whine about tonight, so I guess I have to speak tonight in some way, because that's a tradition. First, I think there's a misunderstanding of how the fire departments work. We only have one fire department in Middletown Township. Everything else is contracted to us, and we have no control over them, like Comcast. If Comcast screws up and has a, has something, I mean, that's, that's kind of the weird thing about the question about the Pendel Fire Department. First off, if he's watching, Pendel has open meetings. You can go and ask and like get involved. That's, that's kind of an important thing. So we just hire them, like, if Parkland, if your house catches a fire, we pay Parkland to cover your house. We don't control them or anything like that. So I just wanted to fix up that misrepresentation. The volunteers, because I used to run with Pendel Eight, the volunteers stand on the quarter with their boots as a yearly fundraiser that they enjoy, and it's to get things that they don't budget for previously. So it's kind of like a bonus to them, not, not an actual fundraising to keep them going. I agree with everyone on the trash. And then somebody said grants are tax dollars. They're not. Grants come from private nonprofits. Some do come from the state, which would come from tax dollars. I want to clear that up. And, oh, our cops, our police have, and, oh my God, I am defending the cops. Our cops are, have gotten more efficient and just better overall over the past couple of years, thanks to the leadership of Chief Joe. I just want to point that out. And 2023 election, I looked it up while you were talking, it was, turnout was actually 45%. So I hope that clears up a lot of things for people who are asking questions, but I thought I'd have to come and defend Middletown Township. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items. Oh, no, sorry. Before we get to that, we have a hearing. My apologies. We have a hearing on an intermunicipal liquor license transfer for WST Group, Inc. Yes, sir.
I'm going to open the hearing first, actually, Mr. Kiesak. So we're going to open the public hearing for consideration of an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license into Middletown Township. The applicant is WST Group Incorporated, and the property involved where the license is proposed is located at 1201 East Lincoln Highway, Langor, Pennsylvania, tax map parcel number 22-46-13. Before I begin, I just want to make sure that the court reporter is taking this down. Thank you. Again, the applicant is WST Group Incorporated. They are going to be leasing the property from 1201 East Lincoln Highway LLC. The relief requested is a transfer of Pennsylvania liquor license number R-731 from Ben Salem Township to the LeBlanc Brazilian Steakhouse located at 1201 East Lincoln Highway. The hearing was properly advertised by public notice in the Bucks County Courier-Times, and we have received a proof of publication from the Bucks County Courier-Times showing the notice was published once a week for two successive weeks on August 25th and September 1st, 2024. Before we have the applicant present their case, I just want to put into the record the board exhibits. We're going to list as Exhibit B1, the application of WST Group Incorporated, received by the township on August 16th, 2024, which had the following attachments. A list of the surrounding properties located within 400 feet of the property, which included a map showing the 400-foot area, a list of the closest churches, daycares, liquor license establishments, and schools to the property, and a copy of the proposed plans and fit-out for the steakhouse at the property. Exhibit B2 is the notice documents, including the public notice and the affidavit of publication from the Bucks County Courier-Times. We're going to label as Exhibit B3, Middletown Township Resolution Number 01-25R, which sets forth the procedures for intermunicipal liquor license transfers into Middletown Township. I believe we have the applicant and the attorney for the applicant here, so if you want to introduce yourself, if you're going to have the gentlemen's to your right and left testify, I'll have them swear, sworn in by the court reporter.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Esposito. John McCreech IV, attorney ID 68944. I represent the applicant, WST Group, trading as LeBlanc Steakhouse. I have with me Tyler Hines. I guess we can swear him in. I think he'll do most of speaking. I guess you swear both of them in, because Wellington Souza and Susan Aguero is here. She is in the hallway. She has a young child with her. But they are the three shareholders and officers of the corporation, and you want to swear, you want to swear them in?
Please raise your hands. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to all of you, God, or so you affirm? So please say, "I do."
I do, I say.
Thank you. Please state in spireful name.
Yeah, first name Tyler Hines. Oh, I'm sorry. Tyler, T-Y-L-E-R, Hines, H-I-N-E-S.
Wellington DeSousa, D-E-S-O-U-Z-A.
And if I may, I don't know if I give it to Mr. Esposito. I did by mail send out letters to all the businesses and residents within 400 feet, certified mail. I do have the receipts from the post office, and I did also send it regular mail, also the same date, the same date, I believe. My eyesight's bad. I was just going to put in what day I mailed them for the record.
Okay, so what you're.
August 28th.
And what you're submitting is copies of the certified receipts that they were mailed out. So we'll take this and we'll label this as Exhibit A1, which is a copy of the certified mail receipts of the public notices that were sent to the neighboring properties.
Okay. And I know, I know from your resolution that you're familiar with the, the process of transferring a intermunicipal liquor license from another township within Bucks County, which is allowed under section 4-461 of the Liquor Code. And the Liquor Code says that if we do bring it in from a separate township, we must first get your blessing and your approval, and that it should be granted unless the, you determine that the request would adversely affect the welfare, health, peace, and morals of the municipality. As you know, the location was a Crab de Jure. It always had a liquor license. The Crab de Jure went out of the business. Mr. Shuen is the attorney for the landlord of the premises, and they're having difficulty with Crab de Jure of getting that license back from them. I think they, I think it's tied up in litigation. I know there is a judgment against the Crab de Jure, but they have to get it charred, sailed, and things like that, which is taking more time than they need, they want, and they don't want the place vacant, and they want it operating, so they have an agreement to buy the license from the Ben Salem Township. And I guess, I guess I have Mr. Hines answer any of your questions. It's a, it's basically a two, it holds about 200 people. We, we sent in the plans. It's all ready to go. It's a sit-down restaurant. There's a bar with maybe more like a waiting bar, not a, not a bar nightclub. It's more like 20 seats. It's a small bar. It's 200 sit-down restaurants. That's what they do. They have another location in Northern New Jersey. They can tell you more about the operation. They'll be open during the week just for dinner, like 5 to 10, on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. They'll probably do lunch and probably open at 1 o'clock to maybe 10 or 11. They anticipate 10 employees. And I'm sure you know the location. There is plenty of parking and everything. So with that, I'd let Mr. Hines answer any questions the board might have.
Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for providing the time with us tonight. If you guys have any questions for us, we would love to answer them for you. We're excited for the LeBlanc Brazilian Steakhouse. I think it's in a great location where it's at right now. We invite all of you to join us when we do start and open, specifically, you members of the board. Yeah, we're just really excited. I think it's a great opportunity for the township to see some some nice fine dining, some nice opportunity for individuals to choose a different place to sit and eat and have a romantic dinner and whatnot. So, yeah, like I said, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Where's your other location currently?
So Mr. Wellington is, he's the owner of that restaurant. He can give you more information.
It's in Hillsdale, New Jersey, Burton County.
Okay. And I mean, your attorney, and you've provided some information, but can you just tell us a little bit more about the concept, what it's going to be like?
Yeah, so it's a Brazilian Steakhouse. It's rodizio, sit-down. So much of everything that comes is, like, if you've ever been to a foie gras de chow or a nabraza, pretty much the same concept. Nothing changes with that. 10 employees. We only need that amount for just the people, I guess we call them gauchos, that come around with the meat. And we have, obviously, hosts and hostess there as well, too. So there isn't a lot of need for a lot of, you know, just having 10 people there. Yeah, that's really about it. Just a nice, fine dining sitting area for people to come and enjoy a nice dinner.
Any other board members have questions?
No. Our goal is to open, like I said, like you said, from the weekdays, Monday through Thursday, 5 to 10, and then Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, 1 to 10. And we might do sometimes like a brunch on Sundays as well. It all depends on, you know, the activity that we get at the restaurant in the first few months, so.
I have a couple of questions, if the board would please. With the liquor license, do you plan on having any takeout alcohol provided? Or that's not, won't be your main focus, correct?
No. 99% of our restaurant is just sit-down.
Okay. Mr. DeSouza, you run a similar-type restaurant. Do you have any citations or any liquor license issues with that establishment?
No, we don't.
Nope. Okay. And just to clarify, because of some legal issues, you weren't able to purchase the liquor license that was currently used prior at Crab de Jure?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
You gave certified notice to the surrounding residents. Any response or objection from any of them?
I did not receive any response from any residents. I did receive, and there wasn't a whole lot, but I did get a fair number of the green cards back that they were signed for, but nobody contacted. My letter has my email and my phone number on it. I didn't get any response by email or phone.
And any more information about the future of the Crab de Jure liquor license and what might happen to that?
Like I said, Mr. Shuen, who represents the, I did speak to Mr. Shuen. He, I guess they were trying to have a writ served against the Crab de Jure and get the license, at which time they could sheriff-sail the license, but that could be months down the road. There could be a bankruptcy. I don't know. They don't want the property vacant for a long time, and that's why they decide. It would have been easier to get Crab de Jure, because then we would just go on the liquor board and knock on here, and it would have been cheaper, too, but-
That's kind of what I was getting at. If that license was available, you would have-
We would, they would have much preferred to just, but for whatever reason, there was a break. I'm not privy to all those conversations, but whatever reasons, there's a breakdown between Crab de Jure and the landlord over what they owe or what they think they owe or-
Fair enough. Okay. Any other questions?
There's no other questions from the board or the applicant. We can close the testimony to additional evidence and then open it up to any public comment. Is anybody here that would like to make public comment on this application? Okay. Seeing none, it's right for the board's vote.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the intermunicipal liquor license transfer application of WST Group, Inc., to permit transfer of Pennsylvania Liquor License Number R-731, LID 104209, from Ben Salem Township to WST Group, Inc., in Middletown Township, located at 1201 East Lincoln Highway, Langhorne, Pennsylvania. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been a motion in a second. Any board questions at this time? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Carrie's 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kezak and the board. Thank you.
Can I just clarify something real quick? Ms. Payne, did you, your vote kind of came in late. I wasn't sure if that was a nay or an aye.
Oh, it was in favor of an aye.
Okay. Sorry, it came in a little late. I just wasn't-
It's okay. Apparently, me and the Zoom are having connectivity issues. I apologize.
Good luck to you. Thank you very much. All right. On to consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Item A, consideration of authorizing payment of September 9th, 2024, plus the amount of $2,263,256.64. B, consideration of approving the August 12th, 2024 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. C, consideration of approving the August 26 minutes of the special capital planning meeting of the Board of Supervisors. D, consideration of allowing Middletown Park and Rec Department to host three beer gardens on Middletown Township property. E, consideration of Resolution Number 24-16R, intergovernmental agreement to participate in the grant applications for towels and gants of graffiti. F, consideration of the South Flowers Mill Drainage Project Change Number One for a negative $21,281.50 for adjustment of final quantities and contract items for project closeout. G, consideration of South Flower Mill Drainage Project Payment Certificate Number Three, final in the amount of $3,013.27 for completed work per the contract items and project completion. H, consideration of revised Barner Subdivision 364 Cedar Road S/LD Number 13-5 Financial Security Release Number Two, final in the amount of $85,736.10 for completed work per the land of Elman Escrow and financial security agreements. And finally, I, consideration of the sewer planning module Resolution Number 24-17R for 14 Fairway Drive subdivision in support of the proposed sewer tap-ins by the applicant. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as read?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion in a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed? Carrie's 5-0. Next on the agenda, we have consideration of a cable franchise agreement with Verizon and Comcast. Mr. Vall.
Good evening, supervisors. If the board might recall, in late 2023, you engaged special counsel from Cohen Law Group to negotiate the two expiring cable franchise agreements, one with Comcast, one with Verizon. They have completed their negotiations, and so for your consideration tonight is two new cable franchise agreements. The one with Comcast is for a term of 10 years. The one with Verizon is for a term of five years. Both of those were preferred terms from each of those companies. Not a whole lot has changed, really just modernizing the agreements. The existing ones that were expiring are quite out of date, or they were, you know, from when they originally signed, in some cases up to 20 years ago. Really, just as case law has evolved over time, just modernizing those agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Vall. Any board members have questions for Mr. Vall regarding the cable franchise agreements?
Can you just explain why we need the two, like, agreement with both Verizon and Comcast?
Sure. These agreements essentially give each private company access to the township's right-of-way in order to provide their, the cables, essentially, to provide their services to the residents. And I should have clarified earlier, for the board's consideration tonight is both approving those two separate agreements, as well as authorizing advertisement of an ordinance, which we then have to come back at a subsequent meeting for enactment.
Is there any significant change with these versus what we had previously?
Really, no significant changes. The cable franchise fee, which is usually kind of the, one of the key areas of interest, is not staying, not changing at all. It was the maximum 5%, and that's not going to be changing. There's some, as I said, some definitions related to case law that's evolved since the last agreements were signed that have been incorporated, but overall, the bottom line is pretty much the same.
Is there a reason why Comcast is 10 years and Verizon is 5 years, or that's just specifically what they want?
So kind of the standard practice is 10 years, which Comcast has been amenable to Verizon, just as a policy decision, has not allowed any cable franchise agreements in the modern era longer than five years, and they basically said from the get-go, that's our stance. We're not changing it. It's a non-negotiable item.
Other questions? I can accept the motion.
I move to authorize advertisement of two ordinances, approving execution of cable franchise agreements with Verizon and Comcast.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion in a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed? Carrie's 5-0.
Aye.
We got you, Ms. Payne. Thank you, Mr. Vall. Next on the agenda, consideration of community development block grant, CDBG, 2024 ADA curb ramp program. Mr. Vall again.
Sure. So earlier this spring, the township received a $175,000 grant from Bucks County, which is federal community development block grant funds, to install curb ramps, again, in the Cobalt Ridge neighborhood. We've done this for a couple of years now. The township put this out to bid, and we received a total of six bids back, ranging from $179,000 and change to the high bid was $335,000. The lowest bidder, T. Schiefer Contractors, was disqualified for not fully complying with the township's responsible contractor ordinance, and so the next responsible bidder was the second one, which was approximately $7,000 higher at $186,200.
Questions for Mr. Vall?
I know when we put this bid out, we wanted to stay within the grant funding that we had, knowing that we were limited to funds. What is the reason behind it coming in so much higher, I think, than the $175 grant? Because I know, what do we anticipate from like an engineering cost over and above this amount?
Sure. So just to clarify, the grant funds can only be used for construction. We unfortunately can't utilize it for any consulting fees. We expect the engineering to be in the about $30,000 to $35,000 ballpark, which, if awarded tonight, would be, you know, coming out of the capital fund. It would not be grant-funded under any circumstance. And in this case, yes, the additional $16,000 would have to come out of the capital fund as well, over and above the $175 that was awarded from the county CDBG grant.
So just, did it increase costs from what we, or did we just bid too many intersections?
I mean, we can't control what private companies are going to come back with. The estimate that we put together was kind of the engineer's assessment based upon, you know, comparable cost for curb ramps and concrete. But unfortunately, you know, it's really an educated guess because relying upon private contractors to submit bids.
What was the next bid up? How much was it?
Yeah, the one above that from NJS Concrete was $213,002.10, and then over that one, there's another $70,000 jump, and it kept going up and up. And if it had gone much past the second bidder, we probably would have recommended differently, but given that this is $7,000 above the low bid, it seems within reason.
The next one was significantly higher.
Yeah. So just to run through the list, the low bid, which was disqualified as a $179 and change, $179,000, excuse me. Number two is $186, which we're recommending for award. The number three was $213,000 and change. Number four was $284,000 and change. Number five, $306,000 and change. And then the high bid was $335 and change.
Thank you.
How many, just refresh, how many curb ramps is this going to?
Sure. It's 24 ramps at about 10 intersections in the Cobalt Ridge neighborhood.
So this is an extra $50,000 over budget, essentially?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. And can we handle that? I know we just came from our capital planning, and things are very tight.
Yeah, things are tight. The projection numbers that we discussed at the capital planning workshop did factor this in into that conversation, and as we look into next year's budget, we definitely should have enough to cover it for this year, and in preparing for next year's bid, we can certainly take another look at this.
Do you think that, like, if we decided not to go through with this this year, do you see that the cost would probably just continue to increase, like, next year?
More than likely, yes. The only advantage you might have is a more favorable position in the construction schedule, but the concern you run into, if we delay the project much longer or reject and rebid, we have the opportunity to likely construct them during this construction season, and if we wait until next year, you're talking about probably March until they're constructed, which would potentially impede the township's chances of securing additional CDBG funds for a future project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we're required to have them, correct?
Yes. The township is required to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Okay, well, I certainly don't want to delay the project, and I have concerns that delaying the project is not going to improve the financial situation. And so I'll move to award the bid for the 2024 CDBG ADA curb ramp program to Marino Corporation in the amount not to exceed $186,200. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I don't know who got it first. Rock, paper, scissors? Dawn, it's been a motion in a second. Any board questions?
I'll just say, one, I still think we have an issue with our RCO. We're rejecting a contractor that I've seen that works with other municipalities. And two, you know, we did double the amount of curb ramps last year. We should have put a bid in that was within the range of the grant. So, again, it's a struggle, but $50,000 over budget is a lot.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Can I ask what disqualified the lowest bidder again? Could you explain that process?
Sure. Mr. Esposito can probably explain a little bit more in detail, but there is an apprenticeship requirement, and specifically, the low bidder did not fully fulfill that requirement, if you want to elaborate.
Yeah, so our responsible contractor ordinance requires the bidding contractors, when it gets over the $25,000 threshold, to comply with an apprenticeship program, and for the specific craft trades that are required for this project. So on this project, we needed them to have laborers and operators and cement masons. The low bidder is part of an apprenticeship program, but did not have those specific craft trades, participate in those specific craft trades. So they did not comply with the RCO fully. They had some compliance with it, but not fully.
And why is it important to have a mentorship program?
So it's kind of in the name of the ordinance itself, responsible contractors. So they get certifications. These are certifications, educational programs that these workers have to go through. They get certified for specific types of jobs. So it kind of almost shows if you have those certifications, those apprenticeships, you're technically more qualified, have more qualified people. Obviously, nothing's perfect. You never know what you're getting, but, you know, you see certifications. It gives you a better understanding of them being a responsible contractor.
So it encourages education and encourages them to likely get better-paying jobs?
Yes.
So can you clarify that for me? This is the company running an apprenticeship program, not necessarily that their workers went through an apprenticeship program, correct?
So it is that their employees and their company participates in an apprenticeship program from outside parties, whether it be a union or other companies. They run apprenticeship programs for specific craft trades. It's not their specific company, so the companies themselves don't run the apprenticeship program, but they participate. They hire employees that have gone through those apprenticeship programs and graduated to journey person status, and they use, utilize people that have graduated.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed?
Nay.
Aye.
Carrie's 4-1. Next on the agenda, consideration of awarding the replacement of the wooden deck at the Barnet Community Park. Mr. Copera.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. The Park and Rec Department is asking the board to award the deck contract to Dilemo Construction. Dilemo is the lowest bidder that meets our responsible contractor ordinance. Dilemma is the lowest bidder that meets our responsible contractor ordinance, and they check out as a competent firm. Just to give you a little background, back in June, I was here to ask to reject and rebid all of the, uh, from the May one bid. We put it out to bid, opened it up on August twentieth, and the, uh, two middle bidders on your sheet, Dilemma Construction and A J A Construction, both met our responsible contractor ordinance and they were all thirteen hundred dollars apart. Dilemma being the lowest, um, their reference, actually, one of their references was the Oxford Valley Mall. So I got to talk to the people over at Simon Property at the mall, which I know very well. They gave them a, a great reference. They had built a concrete salt bin, in fact, for them, and then they've done all the plowing there for about twenty years. They're competent, they show up, they do what they're supposed to do, and then they leave the, the job site clean. So they sound like a great firm, and I would just like the board to awa, uh, award that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Copera. I'll move to execute a contract for the removal installation of a new wooden deck and stairs at the Barnet Community Park to Dilemma Construction Company, L S D of Jenkentown, Pennsylvania, in the amount of ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, and can you talk through Dana and Sons? It looks like we, it's a, the lowest bidder was rejected by the R C O. Um, I looked into them, they're a Co-Stars vendor, so can you, um, is that the same reason why we're rejecting them?
Correct. So they bid, um, they bid in the May, uh, process, they were rejected then. Being Co-Stars means you don't have to go through the public bidding process because they meet all the criteria for bid bonds, good firm, no federal, you know, court cases against them. Um, and then our, R C O then kicks in, which just, just described, which is unique to Middletown Township, and you have to meet that as well. Um, I, it's one of those things.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed?
Nay.
Passes four one. Thank you, Mr. Copera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda, consideration of awarding the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Bucks County Consortium Salt Bid. Mr. Garden Meyer.
Good evening, board members. Um, once again, in front of you, um, every year we participate in the consortium bid for Bucks County. Um, this one happens to be for the salt bid, just like you said. Um, it was awarded to Morton Salt this year um, for sixty dollars and sixty-four cents, I believe, per ton. Or I'm sorry, sixty ninety-five per ton. And we basically, it comes out of the, um, liquid fuels fund, basically, but it still has to be voted on um, to execute this contract.
Thank you. I'll move to award the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five consortium bid for Rock Salt to Morton Salt Inc., Chicago, Illinois, at the rate of sixty dollars and ninety-five cents per ton. Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion in a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Posed?
Aye.
Carrie's five zero. Thank you, Mr. Garden Meyer.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, presentation of the twenty twenty-five minimum municipal obligation, M M O, for the Middletown Township pension plans. Mr. Bandari.
Good evening. Um, as we do every year, um, we have to communicate to the board of the minimum municipal obligation or the M M O for twenty twenty, for each year. Um, in accordance with the state law, Act two oh five, the township is required to certify the M M O each, um, for each pension plan each year by September thirtieth of each year. Um, in front of you, you have both of the M M Os for this year, um, for the non-uniform plan as well as the uniform plan. Um, these were prepared in accordance with our January first, twenty twenty-three actuarial valuation, um, prepared by Conrad Segal, which is our, um, township actuary. Um, for twenty twenty-five, the estimated minimum, um, contribution for non-uniform is four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Um, it's actually a fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four decrease from our twenty twenty-four, um, M M O. And then the estimated, um, obligation for the police pension plan is three million, three seventy-seven, one six. That is an increase of one hundred and eighty-two, six forty, um, from twenty twenty-four. There is no action required. Um, this is a communication, it's already been, um, sent to Conrad Segal and, um, our next, um, basically the next step for us is to pay for the twenty twenty-four, and this will be coming out of our budget in twenty twenty-five. Any questions?
Is this consistent, the increase, with what we would expect?
Yes, um, we actually reduced some of our normal costs, but on the, um, police side, every year our, um, salaries go up. It's based on payroll contributions and our pension contributions in general, year over year.
Other questions for Ms. Bandari? Thank you, Ms. Bandari.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too. All right, that brings us to consideration of approving the following twenty twenty-five R D A grant program application resolutions. Uh, twenty-four dash ten, Public Works Vehicles, twenty-four dash eleven, Police Vehicles. Actually, that's twenty-four dash ten R, twenty-four dash eleven R, Police Vehicles, twenty-four dash twelve R, Pendel Middletown Emergency Squad, twenty-four dash thirteen R, Parkland Fire Company, twenty-four dash fourteen R, Pendel Fire Company, and twenty-four dash fifteen R, North Station. Mr. Vall.
Yes, um, so before the board, uh, just about every September is application to the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority Municipal Grants Program. This is funded by, uh, revenue generated from Parks Casino in Ben Salem, and this program is structured so that, um, adjacent municipalities, um, specifically for, you know, generally public safety improvements, um, are able to submit grant requests to the authority for funding each year. And it has become a pretty consistent and reliable source of funding for our emergency vehicles. Uh, so there's a total of six separate applications before you tonight. Uh, three are township applications. Uh, the first one, uh, Public Works Vehicles consists of a bucket truck and pickup truck. Uh, the police vehicles consist of five police vehicles and a motorcycle. Uh, the third township application is the, uh, number fifteen on the list. Uh, it's the North Station. This is the station off of Langham and Yarley Road. It's owned by Middletown Township. Uh, and this is to do some, uh, maintenance to the floor and exterior of that building. Um, and then the other three, uh, applications are coming from our local emergency services. Uh, the first one is from Pendel Middletown Emergency Squad for some paving at their main property on East Lincoln Highway, um, as well as Parkland Fire Company requesting turnout gear, and Pendel Fire Company, uh, for some air conditioners at their main station in Pendel. Um, we are recommending prioritizing these projects, prioritizing as we generally do. Um, the township applications, I stated first as a top priority, followed by the, um, from the other agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Vall. Any questions for Mr. Vall regarding, uh, these R D A application resolutions? Can we just make one motion to approve all of them at once, or do we have to do them all separately? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve resolutions twenty-one dash ten R, twenty-four, or sorry, twenty-four dash ten R, twenty-four dash eleven R, twenty-four dash twelve R, twenty-four dash thirteen R, twenty-four dash fourteen R, and twenty-four dash fifteen R. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. There's been a motion in a second. Any board questions? Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Posed? Carrie's five zero. Thank you, Mr. Vall. And that brings us to other business. I'll start with Mr. Kessler.
Nothing to add to see you then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Esposito.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Vall.
I just wanted to share that the board will be having two budget workshops in the month of October. The first on Monday, October fourteenth, second, October twenty-eighth, and those are at six P M. in this building.
Thank you. Ms. Dioli-Cools on Zoom, do you have anything to add under other business?
I would just like to thank the board for recognizing September as ovarian cancer awareness month. As a two-time, seven-year survivor, I very much appreciate it and would just encourage folks to listen to their gut and know the signs. I am living proof of, um, knowing what the signs are and following your gut. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Corporal.
Thank you.
Ms. Kane.
I was just going to mention, um, I know a couple of residents have reached out to me. Um, Newtown, uh, Joint Sewer Authority is looking to put a, um, sewage treatment facility on, very, on the border between Newtown and Middletown. Um, you know, I'm working with the township staff to potentially get, um, an update at one of our next, our subsequent meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Ms. Hannah.
I wanted to say, um, thank you to Officer Runner for, um, his service. Thirty-two years is a long time. We appreciate that. Um, and just thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Payne.
Uh, I wanted to say congratulations to Officer Runner on his retirement, but I also wanted to make sure that we said, uh, special very happy birthday to Dr. Coleman. Um, what a gift it really is to be a hundred and five. Um, so that's just really, uh, wonderful to see, and I'm grateful that the township recognized his birthday.
Thank you, Ms. Payne, and I have nothing further, so with that, I can accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second? You got the second.
Again.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.